My name is Phillip Jefferson, 59 years old. I'm seeking the position of County Commissioner, District One, which governs Sanderson, Ole Miss, and small portion of Margarita. And I would like your support.
Thank you. Mr. Turk, same to you if you'd introduce yourself to the viewers.
My name is Canoe Turk, running for County Commissioner also for District One, and I would greatly appreciate anyone's support. I thank you very much for the opportunity to serve you.
And Mr. Mann?
I'm Ronald Mann, a lifelong resident of Baker County. I'm 66 years old and been in business for 45 years. Managed budgets and have a lot of business experience. I'm a candidate for County Commissioner in District One, and I'd appreciate your support.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. You know, you're running to serve four years. So what are your top, you know, one to three priorities for those first two years in office?
Well, my first priority, it may not seem like a great priority, but it would be my presence in the community. Get to know the people, to feel the people, to know what the people want and how they want to be served, what they are actually asking for. And I want to be in the mix with the people in the community. That's my first one. But I know growth is a huge concern for the county right now. And that would be my second priority is to get involved with the growth aspect of the county, which way the county is going with growth. And I would like to be a part of that growth and that change and tour how that growth go where it goes. And youth activities is another big priority of mine. Something to keep the youth busy, to keep them going in a positive direction. And also, small businesses is a big part of my progress as well. There's nothing currently right now in Baker County that gives to the small business. I would like to mentor a program for small business concerns, for us, just the basics is how do you get insurance? How do you get funding? And how do your employees, how do you serve them? And just the basic for small businesses.
There's a lot of areas that we need to address in the budget. I'd like to see us start addressing long-term concerns in the infrastructure, water sewer, highways, roads, things that have been somewhat neglected because of some of our budget concerns with the jail, mostly. We hadn't had much other revenue to work on areas. So as development comes, and it is coming, we need to manage that development and plan ahead to use that tax money to address our infrastructure concerns. There's a lot of areas in the county where if you go from I-10 South on 229th, you'll see that it's full of potholes. That's not the only road in the county that's that way. There are many roads in the county that need to be addressed. We need to prioritize those construction projects and seek funding from the state as much as we can and manage our funds within to address those infrastructure concerns. Water and sewer, as most people know, is a big concern for the county. Probably 80% of the county does not have managed water and sewer systems. And some people are looking to put in private systems. I want to ensure that 10 years, 20 years from now, we don't inherit or run down managed system that we can't maintain.
I think that's a good question for any candidate. And I feel like, you know, we all three see some of the things that are going on in the county and some of the things that need to be addressed as well. Of course, for me, my top priority is governmental transparency. Because I feel like the citizens of this community should know and have access to any and everything. Now, I know that we technically have, you know, records requests that we can do for this or for that. But some of the things have not been as transparent as I feel like they should be to the public. Because when you spend the money in this county, you're spending that taxpayer's money. That money comes out of the pocket of each and every person that lives in this county and pays taxes. And I think that that transparency is of the absolute utmost importance. So for me, in the first two years, and yeah, 90 days is a little ambitious, but right from the gate, I'm telling you transparency is important for me. Now, the youth is another issue that's really big for me because, you know, we have some things, but I feel like we could do a lot more. I really do for our youth. I feel like that they need a little bit more. Our roads, just like Mr. Mann says, I see some of the roads in the community. And I know we don't have the money in our budget to do some of these things right now, but we have to look for that money because there are monies available to help us to take care of these projects. Those are really important to me as well as jobs. I mean, this is important for anybody in our community. But we need good clean jobs, clean jobs for Baker County and the citizens. We don't need something to come here that's going to be a detriment to our community, to our water system, or to our people. You know, these things are very important. Growth, growth's important also. You know, so in that, in that first two years, you know, you need to form the relationship with some of the other commissioners to where we can get something passed. Because one man cannot do anything in a committee of five. We have to have a majority. So we need to form those relationships, be transparent, and try to get some of these agendas taken care of and done.
Regarding the fire department, the county has benefited from a federal grant from FEMA called a SAFER Grant to hire full-time firefighters. And they've applied for another five-year FEMA grant to fund eight additional firefighters to serve in areas of the county that are underserved today. So would you, presuming we do get the federal grant for eight additional firefighters, would you take that federal money, even though it's temporary in nature? And after those five years, the county would either have to, you know, fund those positions themselves or get rid of the positions? Because those, the money would be gone. So would you accept that federal grant for the eight firefighters, even though it's temporary?
I do believe that we would need to accept the money and enforce the, we've got the infrastructure there for the fire teams. We've got the equipment. We've got the buildings. We've got the resources there, but we don't have the people. And we're short at almost every location on staff. And over five years, our economy's going to grow here as growth comes in and as new industry is developed here. So we would have to look at the budget five years in. And if we couldn't afford all eight, we could afford at least part of them by then. So we have to manage our budget and look five years down the road and be prepared to take action with those eight positions and hopefully add more positions. Because fire protection affects your insurance rates. It affects your ability to make a living here because you're spending so much on homeowner's insurance and other properties because you don't have fire and rescue available or you have limited fire and rescue available. We've seen people lose their lives. A family lost their own lives recently because we didn't have the resources to get there in time to help them. We need to improve those resources. And if it's temporary, so be it. But at least for five years, we'll have the resources we need to address the need.
As everyone knows that knows me and knows from my last campaign, the fire issue was a very hot button for me. Because in the first year of the budgeting with the new fire stations and all, we were over a million dollars short in our first year budget. For me, as a citizen now, I wasn't a commissioner. And I, and this is one of the reasons that I decided to run was because of these budgeting issues also. You know, a million dollars is a lot of money. And yeah, the numbers sound great whenever you talk about taking the money for aid and for this. We got five now that we fixing to have to support. If we don't get an additional funding for that, okay, we're going to have to pay for those five out of our pocket as a county. Our county doesn't run a huge reserve. We run roughly, let's just use a round number, around $3 million every year, that end of the year. You know, that's something we can work off of. Our first year, we were over a million dollars short for that fire budget. I know fire is important. I mean, this is important to everybody. My neighbor's house burned to the ground, you know, two years after we had the, or a year after we had the last fire thing assessment and all come in. So it's a very important thing. People's insurance rates are very important. I think we need to capitalize on what we have instead of creating more problems. Now, we have to pay for those people. I mean, you can't hire a man, say, well, you got a job for five years, and then I'm going to lay you off because we can't afford it. So the question is, do we raise the taxpayers' taxes? Do we not take the money? Do we take the money and five years just kind of see what happens down the road? You know, we have to have a plan. So if we take that money, we have to have a plan in five years to be able to pay those men. Because those men are going to be, or women, whatever it is, are going to be looking for a permanent job and not a five-year, here you go, see you later. So for me, I feel like we could take the money as long as we have a plan for five years not to fire those people and let them go.
Thank you, Mr. Turk.
Yes, I would. I would take it. And I think it is a beginning for us to have that funding for the eight position and for the well-being and the safety of the community for that time period. But during that time period, I would seek to secure funding for those members. And kind of like he said, I wouldn't want to hire somebody to fire somebody. And they are looking forward to making a career with the fire department. And it would be really unfair to hire them and then have to let them go. So I would, I would seek funding for those position while we, while the five years are running. And I, and I also, to be on the safe side, I would be looking at my fire department. Where can we cut at? Where can we make some room just in case? If we had to let one go, we can, we still can manage. But I'm for taking the money and seeking to secure funding for the eight position.
Side, the county has this problem now frequently that when somebody calls for a fire rescue, there's not an available rescue unit, that'd be an ambulance that can respond immediately. Sometimes they have to call JFRD, Columbia County, whoever to respond. So if elected, how would you reduce the number of what they're calling zero status calls for emergency medical services? And how would you pay for it?
Well, I want to bridge back just a second that the reason that my neighbor's house burned down that I was talking about right whenever we passed the other thing for the fire is because Columbia made it there first. So we see there's an issue. Columbia made it there first. By the time Baker made it, you know, it was already getting under control and they were doing it. But it was still a total loss because the house had to be bulldozed down. So that was, that was a loss. Now, the rescue is a similar situation. I mean, of course, we've got to look for some kind of monies to support this. Because you can't just yank a taxpayer's dollar, a pocket open and take the dollars out for every little thing that we think that we need. We need to see and analyze where the problems actually at. I mean, if we don't have enough, well, it's pretty simple. We got to have more. We don't have enough fire, enough rescue. We have to have more. So I don't know the number of calls that are actually going unanswered that are transferred over to another district or to another, you know, rescue like JF, whatever. You know, I don't know the numbers on that, the hard numbers. And that's what I base my facts on. It's in the hundreds of calls that we can't get to every year. That's a lot. I mean, this is an issue that needs to be addressed, and it should have been addressed a long time ago. I'm tired of kicking the can down the road. And I'm not hacking on anybody. I'm just saying that we've become so reactive in this county as a commission and as, as a government, that we're not proactive to anything. That's a problem. It's a problem for me that in my district, that the people on this side of the track can't get service whenever that train used to back up all the time. For years, they promised, you know, to build a road to go around the overpass so they could come back over and come into Sanderson from the other side and get to the other side of the tracks. You know, there's some issues in this whole thing that really have to be tackled. As far as funding goes, I don't know what grants are available, if there are any. We need to look into that. And we need to look at where the money could come from. Because this is definitely going to cost money. None of these things are free. But safety is important. And that, and that fire and rescue is important. But that, that ambulance getting to you is very important. It's more important than just about anything.
If possible, I haven't checked all the ins and outs of it for what it would take to do it. But I would like to see them be dual certified to where it could be fire and rescue and where they can offer the medical side of it as well. And I know that will provide some additional training. And we have to be prepared to provide that training. And you will have to offer that to that staff upon hiring that staff. That would be a part of their, their pay. If when they come, they come already prepared. And the ones that are there, we probably would have to train them to be dual certified. And that would be, that's how I would tackle that problem is if we can have, and only hire what we can afford. I know we don't have any right now, but to hire what we can afford, start there and work our way up.
There's no easy fix to it. To eliminate those calls, you need more units. More units is more staffing. More units are very expensive. One developer is proposing as many as 2,000 new homes here. So the number of zero calls would only increase if we don't address the staffing and address the equipment needs of the fire and rescue. But you can't do it all in one bite. We have to set up a budget where that increase is included in the budget over time. So at some point, we meet the need. But part of that problem is caused by transport. We limit transport here where we're transporting somebody from Baker County to Duval County or Alachua County. And that unit's out of service if they're doing transport. We try to limit that service as much as we can, but there are situations where that service is required. That's another thing. We need to address how we transport, when we transport, and have definite set programs for how that works. We can't just willy-nilly, okay, this one's going to be transported, that one's not. So that takes those units out of service. And when you're down to one or two units in the county, you're going to have zero calls.
Would you, would you support the return of impact fees on new construction, new or higher property assessments across the board, or an option to fund, or another option to fund budget shortfalls in county departments like fire, rescue, roads, and/or solid waste, just to name a few, and why or why not?
Yes, I would. I would, I would support the impact fee coming back.
Yes, sir.
And I, I believe that it, now, impact fee can work two ways. They, they, it helps the county. It brings in more revenue. But if they're too high, then it can hurt the county because no one wants to come and pay that high impact fee. And I think St. John County, they use it to keep people out there. They raise it so high to it, it hurts to where people don't want to come in. But if, if we can agree upon a decent impact fee, I would, I would be in favor of an impact fee to support the revenue that coming into the county. But it has to be across the board for, for everybody. There's, there's, there's no, no wiggle room in there. If we do it for one, we have to do it for all.
Thank you, Mr. Jefferson.
I've mentioned the potential growth here and with new development in the midpoint Parkway area and possibility of as many as 2,000 new homes being built here. As a taxpayer, I don't want to pay to absorb all the costs of building and zoning and everything else. Every department will be impacted by their 2,000 homes. Every department will face an increase in their costs and their expenditures. I don't want to be responsible for paying for all the new homes to come in. Yes, once they're here and they're established, they will pay property taxes like we do. But getting them here and getting them established, people enjoy our rural life. People appreciate what we have here. And they want to come be a part of it. But when you bring 2,000 new homes in within a five-year period, even if it's 10 years, it's going to have a huge impact on the county. So we've got to find a way to grow the revenue, whether that's impact fees. I don't see increasing property taxes on the current property taxpayers. But we have to find a way to balance the budget with all this new impact. When you look at places like Yulee, used to be a red light between I-95 and Fernandina. And now it's a full-grown city jungle. You'll stop at 10 red lights before you get to the old red light in Yulee. So growth there is, what we see coming here is that same potential. As industry comes here, as jobs come here, people are coming here. So we need to balance the budget. And if impact fees is the best way, I would not oppose it.
Well, any of my supporters that know me know that I'm not a fan of more taxes. Anybody. So I, and I ran on this platform last time. You know, I'm not a big fan of increasing taxes. Now, as far as an impact fee goes, we're talking, if you're talking about 2,000 homes or something, flat and simple, our roads can't handle it. I mean, we can't even hardly get to the interstate with 2,000 more people anywhere in this county. I don't care if they're right next to the interstate. This is going to be a major congestion issue, fire, rescue. I mean, that's going to bring issues also there. So an impact fee may be the solution, may not be the solution. I think we need to look at the other counties around us, see what everybody else is doing, kind of take assessment of that and see where their impact fees are and what they've done for their county in terms of infrastructure and all, and revenue growth for the growth. So am I in favor of an impact fee? That's a yes and no. I don't think if you had 10 acres and you wanted to give your kid five acres of that, he should pay a $5,000 impact fee. That's just me. I don't agree with that. Some people do. Whenever you have a level playing field and everybody pays the impact fee, it's going to affect that. You know, that kid's already here. He's already using the roads. He's already there. He's just establishing a home and he's going to start paying taxes on that if you give him the land. But I don't feel like he should pay an impact fee. So if we do an impact fee, there should be some exceptions in there for our local citizens that just want to give their family something that's already here. Now, if they want to build a subdivision, that's another thing. But if they want to give it to their family, that's a whole nother issue. And I don't think we should be penalizing them for, just, I mean, I'm the same way. I got kids. I want to give them some land. I don't think I should be penalized or my kids should be penalized for that because they're already here. They're already using the roads and the services that are here. So no, and I'm not for an abhorrent tax either, just, just to make that, an increase in the abhorrent tax, just to make that clear also. Because I'm the no-tax guy. But I know we got to have something.
What are the most important attributes that you would look for in new volunteers for the county commission-appointed advisory boards like the Land Planning Agency, Tourism Development Council, the Baker County Corrections Management Corporation Board of Directors? There are a few others. And how would you value the recommendations that you get from those people? So kind of a two-part question. What do you look for in those volunteers? How, how, how much would you value their recommendation?
Well, I'll start with the last part. How much do you value their recommendations? If you're willing to have them on a board advising you on anything, you should have confidence in them to give you feedback, not to make decisions for you, but to give you feedback to help you lead the community, understand what the community wants, and understand the need. And once you understand what the community wants to do and you understand the need, then you can address the problem. But those volunteers have to be part of the community. It's not somebody that just moved in six months ago and they want to take charge of things. They, they need to understand the history of Baker County, the people in Baker County, the rural life that we've lived for generations. My family's been here over seven generations. They need to understand that these people have been here. These people have made Baker County what it is and made it desirable for you to come here. They need to have an education background or an experience background or a working knowledge of some of the issues regarding the staff that they're on. But they need to be providing all the county commissioners with reliable information and information that they can use to help make a sound decision. It's not just, well, this is my opinion. This is the facts. This is where we are today, and this is where we need to go.
Well, recommendations are valued, but it really depends on who they come from. Because, you know, if it's just a blanket recommendation, maybe it's not as good as it should be. But personal recommendations for people that you know, that you know that have experience and knowledge is important. Now, that also is important. So the recommendation is good, but the person needs to be somewhat experienced in these things. Finance is a big one of some sort. Because all these things we're talking about include finance. They need to understand budgeting. Budgeting's a big part of it. So really, the experience level or the, the knowledge of the individual about what, what committee they're going to or board they're setting on is of the utmost importance. Because if they don't have the knowledge and understanding, you know, to, to settle on that position, it's going to be hard for them to really do a good job at that position. And in that, we need some diversity in there because this person may have more experience here and this person may have more experience here. But when they come together and this one sees this one's points, they may shed a different light on the situation that somebody hasn't come up with. So diversity is important in that particular situation as well as the experience that the individual has.
I would look for, particularly the background and their education as it pertains to the position in which we are seeking that person for. And also, I would look at their availability, how available they are to serve on the board, would they be there more than they're not there? And how available they are to myself, if I can call them pretty much anytime I need them, to call them, to, to search out an answer or what have you. And that person, I would like for that person to be from here, from Baker County, that they, they serve here, have ties in Baker County. And also, their family life is important to me, how their, their family structure, how they, they set up. And also, the, I would value their recommendation. If they meet those qualifications and I chose that person, I would value their recommendation.
How should the county attract and hire good employees while still being good stewards of taxpayer dollars used to pay competitive salaries and FRS pension benefits?
I like that question. That was a very good question and one that I have been asked by a few people. And as a businessman and having been in business and hired and fired many, many people over the years, I worked with my dad and we hired and fired so many guys, I don't even know how many. But seeing that the retention of a good employee is more important than the hiring of a new one. Because if you can't retain that person that's good at their job, you just lost the battle. Because you're going to hire another person, you're going to train them, you're going to pay them a low wage, like we do some of our employees now. They're going to go to work somewhere else. They're going to take the experience that they get here, they're going to go use that experience somewhere else and get a higher wage. So yeah, we, we've got to pay some higher wages to some of the positions that are in the community. But I think retention is important. I mean, experienced, good people are hard to find. A man or a woman that shows up for work on time every day, you know, with the exception of something major happening and knows their job and can do their job, man, that is valuable. That is extremely valuable in business to have that person. And we should not be letting those people go. And we do let those people go sometimes. We let them go off to other counties and take what they've gotten here that's costed the taxpayers to teach them and use it somewhere else in another community. We should pay those people. We should retain those people. And the people that aren't good, well, that's understandable. It's happens in every job. Let them go. And you got to hire somebody new. But when you got a good person, don't let them go. Keep that person on board.
I mean, I, I agree with what he was saying about the, the being able to keep a good employee. I think it's how we treat them too. And if, if, if that position falls under the commissioner, if it's a county position, I think we should be paying close attention to how our employees are being treated. And that's when it's the first beginning of keeping a good employee is how we treat them, how we order them. And I, I think we should even do a drive-by, I mean, not a drive-by, but a stop-by just to shake their hand and tell them that we appreciate them. And also, but the pay is going to be the biggest thing that's going to keep them there. We have to be competitive in our pay, what we're paying them. It has to be competitive with the surrounding county. Maybe not as much as surrounding county, but somewhere in the close vicinity. And also, I think we can do a better job of selling the, the community, our county itself. I think the, we have excellent schools that they can come to that. If they have children, that would be a positive for them to come here and to have their children to go to school here. And I think those, all those things are great. And we have, even our, like Ocean Pond, I mean, if they like that type of wildlife, the hiking and show park. I mean, we have a lot to offer here in Baker County. And we just have to do a better job of selling it to that person.
That's, it's not easily done. And we've, if it were, they would have answered it years ago and we'd be fully staffed and everybody would be paid. There's a benefit to being in Baker County, to live in and working in Baker County. Both of my sons are grown adults. They both live and work. They both live and work in Baker County. That's great. I drove back and forth to Jacksonville for years, five days a week. And not to have that expense, not to have that wear and tear on your vehicle, house back. But we still have to take care of the people that we have and give some expectation to new hires for what they're gonna get. Uh, the county road department's a, a wonderful example of how we fail our own people. We bring somebody new in, we help them get their CDL, they can go anywhere and make more money than they get in the county road department.
Yep.
We, I've got friends that have been there, they're career county road employees, some that have been there and have retired from county road department. It's embarrassing what we do to support those people. We've done a lot, we've changed them to a four-day week, but when a storm comes through and something needs to be done, we call on them twenty-four hours a day for them to be available, even at the low wages with the minimal equipment that we're able to provide. So that, county road's a prime example of what we need to do. We have to find revenue to pay the people that we can keep the ones we have and the ones that are coming in, we can give them some expectation for the future. Not, I'm gonna be here six months and I'm gonna be down the road.
This is where I firmly believe that being a business owner and an actual employer of people and not being an employee comes into play. Because when you're a business owner, you start understanding how important that employee retention is. The road department, man, you sell a mouthful. And then there's others. And when we have new hire opportunities, I see it in the paper sometimes, I'll see what they're offering the people and I'm thinking, this is a joke. The idea is not to beat somebody up and pay them as little as possible. The idea is to get a good person in there, pay them a fair wage and have them stay. There's massive value in that. And the county needs to understand that and being an employer instead of an employee, you really understand that.
The county jail is on pace to lose about a million dollars this year. Given that the jail reserves are expected to be about two to three million later this year, which is about the minimum they're gonna need, uh, what should the county commission do to balance the annual jail budget?
Well, that's a good question and that's been a ongoing battle for a while. And we just spoke of the, uh, uh, putting people in place to manage and to oversee and, and I think that's one of the things that what we can look at is, is the overseer of the jail to, to, to tap into that and see what, what are their thoughts and what are they thinking on how we're, we're gonna fix the problem. If, if been there long enough to have addressed it to where we can have a better solution than what we have right now. I don't know all the, um, outs and ends of, of the, um, correction aspects of it, but I do know that it, it's a problem. I read about it in, in the, in the paper. And I know that we do house, uh, federal inmates there and that's where a big portion of the budget come from, but undoubtedly that's, that's not the total answer to it. And, uh, the, uh, county commissioners, I mean, that's, that's probably gonna be one of their toughest, um, um, job there is, is to balance that, that jail. We gotta have a, a county jail. We, we know that. We gotta have it. We can't close it. But that's, that's where I, I stand on it. And, uh, I, I know that's a battle that is ongoing and we're gonna have to tackle it.
I think we all know that the commission at that time, uh, made the mistake and we all make mistakes, but they made the mistake of getting into the situation we're in today. There's no easy way out. We've got to fund the jail, we've got to have a jail. Uh, there's no easy way of getting three or three and a half million dollars a year to fund the jail. Uh, staffing requirements at the jail are basically at the minimum. It, you could cut the number of prisoners in half, you still got to have medical staff, you still got to have people to cook, you still got to have people to maintain the place. So your staffing's gonna stay the same by renegotiating the contract with the government. Uh, we've restructured that some and that's a lot better off. But right now, we're five years in to a twenty-five-year refinance deal. So when the refinancing's done and it's paid off, you'll have a forty-year-old facility. We're recently upgrading all the software in the facility because the software they have was outdated and no longer functional. So another few thousand dollars. And it just keeps going down that drain. There's no easy answer to it. I wish there was. I wish the people that were in office and had made those decisions at the time had more information or better information to guide us into this. But we, we're in neck deep and we got to pay for it. There's no easy way to raise funds to pay for it, but that's where we are today.
This is definitely a hot topic. We all know it, everybody in the county knows it, it's no secret at all. Uh, I went to the last budget meeting, of course, I didn't see but two other people there, none of them were running for county commission for the jail. But in that budget meeting, they said they needed one point five million dollars. Now, I read in the paper, they said one point two million. Yeah, and, and I'm, I'm thinking, when I first was told about it, it was five hundred thousand dollars, then we were at a million, now we're at one point five million. Where does this end? I mean, it's like the numbers increase constantly on how much the jail needs. Absolutely, we gotta have a jail. We don't have to fund federal prisoners. That was put into place for that jail to supposedly pay for itself. But as a county and as county commissioners, we don't have to fund federal prisoners. We have to fund our local prisoners, our emergency system and our sheriff's department. Now, it all is wrapped into one and that's kinda why things are the way that they are and why we're all choking. And we are choking on this debt. It was, like you said, refinanced a few years ago at a great phenomenal rate, but still has to be paid for. Is there a short answer for one man? No. But as a board, we've got to collectively, one more thing, come together on and figure a way to take care of this because the money's not coming out of the thin air. The money has to come from the taxpayers. If it comes anyway, it has to come out of the pocket of each and every one of you to pay for these things. And our job as commissioners will be to try and save you that money. That's our job.
How would you, if elected, how would you improve county parks and recreation in terms of facilities, services or programs?
First of all, we have some resource, excuse me, some resources that are very nice. Uh, the duck pond facility in that area is very nice. The ball parks are redoing part of them. It's nice. You have Shoals Park, you have a lot of resources here, Ocean Pond, Palestine, there's a lot of resources within the county. We have to budget better till we know, not just months or weeks or ahead of time. We have to know years ahead of time how we have money coming in for parks and recreation and we have to have those budgeted. There's a group that recommends, uh, our parks and recreation development. Uh, we need to put more responsibility on them to understand what our resources are. And when we send out a bid or a quote, uh, for a bid, we need to spell out, this is our resources, this is what we want and this is what we're looking for you to provide. A lot of times in our bids, we fall short of giving all the information of exactly what we want and you wind up getting bids back that are spread over a range and then you have to decide, well, this one's kinda what we want, so this is what we're gonna get. Uh, that's not comparing apples, apples all the time. So we need to manage our bid process, especially when it comes to recreation. And, uh, we need to manage our budget better and set budget goals that are long-term, not just this year's budget's what we got to have. And that's the way I feel like we've done a lot of times. We set a one-year goal instead of a five-year or ten-year goal. And recreation has to be a part of that goal.
Uh, now, parks and recreation, of course, that involves things for the youth, to me. You know, a lot of that means things for the youth, which I'm definitely all in for that. Um, we have the ability to get some grants to do some of this stuff. We've gotten some grants to do some of these things. The problem is that we have people that don't have any children, that don't understand the need for this, that are presently in control of these situations and we have people whose children are far, far grown, they might have grown two now. But I see the need, having raised my children here, having seen that they had a lack of things to do. My daughter was in swim for years. My son and daughter were both in four H since they were this high. You know, because there's just not a lot of things for them to do of community involvement. I put forward a splash park whenever I ran last time. You know, we, we, uh, had some people blow it all out of proportion like we were wanting to build Water World here, you know, no. What's Lake Butler got? A splash park. Nothing wrong with a splash park. That funding could be not attained, not very difficult. It's not that hard to get that small amount of money. Issue, of course, is parking, issue, of course, is where to put things, but these are things we can work through. Do we need more for parks and recreation? Absolutely, because we need more for these kids. Splash park would be fantastic for everybody. Doesn't have to be a year-round thing and it's not that much to build and it's not that much to maintain. And we can get federal money for some of these things, or state money for some of these things because it's available. We have to apply for it in order to be able to get it.
Well, well, first of all, I, I, I think we, it would be appropriate if we had a six-year planning committee just for this, this only. Because it's, it's, um, just this year, they had like eighty-five little league teams, so the, the county have grown tremendously, so it's, it's not going anywhere. It's gonna be a huge problem and each year it's gonna get bigger and bigger. So we, we gotta deal with it. And if we don't have the time to sit down and, and put the time to it, let's, let's get a committee in that will, uh, sit down and, and bring answers back to us, what we need. And I believe, and through, through my, uh, experience, I have got better answers from the line staff that actually are doing the job than I have sometime from, from my, uh, peers. We sit in the office together, but we, we don't know what's going on out in the field. And many times the line staff, they, they have great ideas. It's just, they don't have a voice. And, and I think we can lend the voice to some of the line staff that are out doing the job that can be a great benefit to us. And, uh, we're gonna have to fund it as well and, and, and I, I, I agree that there, there's some, uh, uh, grants out there that I think that we can attain to, to get it started. But we do need to make it a part of our budget to keep it, keep it afloat, to keep it going.
The county routinely waives or exempts residential developers from road paving requirements when they build new residential subdivisions as a way to encourage growth. Should the county continue this policy despite so many complaints from resi- residents regarding poor road conditions?
This is definitely another hot topic. I mean, I get this question from people as I talk in the community over and over again because what really and truly ultimately happens is that we, John Q taxpayer, have to pay for that road. Because it's going to need maintenance and as people drive and live in that subdivision, up and down, up and down, they're gonna need maintenance, they're gonna look to the county because the person's paying their taxes that lives there, they want a decent road to drive on. I get it, I understand both sides of the fence. The guy developing the property wants to make money because that's why he's doing it. You know, but we can't just kick the can down the road constantly. There, once again, every time we kick this can down the road on any subject, it costs John Q taxpayer, period. And that's just where the rubber meets the road. It's not a popular thing with some people, you know? But the truth of the matter is these things have to be paid for. This is absolutely a fact and absolutely a problem and we, we have to do this. Even if the lot costs five thousand dollars more, if the person wants to live there, it's gonna be an even playing field for everybody. So if they buy over here or if they buy over there, this guy has to have a paved road, this guy has to have a paved road and John Q taxpayer don't have to pay for it. The developer has to do it in order to make a level playing field. You can't make this guy pave his roads and this guy over here not pave his roads and let him sell his lots for five or ten thousand dollars less. That's not a level playing field. It's not fair to the taxpayer and it's not fair to the developer. So it's all got to be paid for and I don't think we should pay for it as taxpayers.
I would like to see that policy changed and changed immediately. And I agree, I, I don't think the, um, county should put that bill that the developer is coming in and setting up, which he will make money. But on the front part of it, he needs to put the roads in himself, develops the road. Now, I do agree that the county, once they get the road in and paid and they're usable, we can, um, we, we have given the road some attention after the fight, but we shouldn't have to put the roads in for their developer. And that goes back also to our, and, and I know our road departments is not the best, but we have to work on our road department because it's coming and the new developers coming in and a lot of, they're gonna be tasked with a lot of it that's coming. As the roads need maintenance, our road department's gonna be tasked with. So we have to work on developing our road department as well.
I, I don't believe the taxpayer should be burdened with long-term support of subdivision roads. Uh, there has to be some revenue upfront, whether that's an impact fee again or how they structure that so the county has the resources to pay for supporting those roads. But as far as the county building the roads for a subdivision or new development, I'd be against that altogether. The county don't have the resources or the time, the manpower to do that. And, uh, I don't think we should be involved with the subdivision growth in that way. We're gonna have growth here, but that growth has to be managed. When you look at the little subdivision out here off of Snake Road, if your fire, if your house is in the back of that place and it catches on fire and those cars and boats and everything else parked in the road, that fire truck's not gonna get back there anytime soon. If a rescue unit goes to, through there, he's gonna have to weave through cars to get in there to save whatever the problem is. We have to manage those subdivisions better than what we've done in the past. We have to manage growth. We're gonna have growth. That's inevitable. I'm glad we do. More taxpayers share tax burden for us and it gives us an opportunity to have more resources. But just to allow a subdivision to come in and then dump the roads or the sewer system or any of their assets on the county for long-term maintenance is not realistic to me.
What kind of residential development pattern is more appropriate for the unincorporated areas of the county? Would you rather see more rooftops, smaller lots or fewer rooftops with larger lots?
Well, I, I would begin with the, uh, less rooftops.
Larger lots.
And larger lots, just because of, of the condition that the county is, is already in, so we can. I, I would like to be able to manage what, what's coming in better. If, if we go with the big numbers, it, it, it comes in as a flood on us too quick and, and it may overwhelm us. So I, I, I would rather begin with a slower process and work our way up to a, a larger lot.
For the rural areas, I think we, we have to stick with the larger lot size and if you were rooftops. Uh, we don't have the resources to put in infrastructure there for water and sewer and you're talking about a high-density area, unless somebody's coming in and developing in that area and they're willing to foot the bill for the infrastructure, the water, sewer and roads, then there's just no need in having a half-acre lot or a forty-foot wide lot like some of the developers want to do in a rural area. We can't support it.
My, my view on this is, you know, kinda how I've seen it in construction, which I've been in my whole life. Okay, certain areas can handle, you know, uh, heavily developed areas, certain areas cannot. The infrastructure is super important, the roads that we have to be able to handle that. Now, do I think we should put, you know, half-acre lots everywhere in the county? It's not feasible. It's just not feasible to do that. Should everybody in the county have to have ten acres? It's not feasible for that, you know? Even if you have ten acres, like I said earlier, if your family wants, you wanna give your kid a couple acres of it, we shouldn't have a restriction that says, well, you can't have less than ten acres or seven point five acres or five acres. You know, you should be able to allow for special exceptions, but when you talk about development of a subdivision, you know, you're talking about usually high density. And in rural areas, high density doesn't work as well because your infrastructure can't handle it. There's no sewer, there's no water, there's the road capability. You know, people, no matter what, are going to the interstate to go to work. So if you're gonna do something like that, there's gotta be some kinda plan to get them people to work. So if you're gonna put in any kinda high density, uh, in a rural area, you gotta have it. Would I rather see high density in a rural area? Of course not. We all like to see the country, we live in the country life, you know, the family thing, we all get it, you know? We've been here for generations and we've seen the same thing, you know, we like the rural life. But, you know, sometimes you have to make exceptions, sometimes you don't. So would I like to see more roofs? Uh, more roofs means more tax revenue for the county, but at the same time, you have to be able to handle it and manage it. So in certain areas, it's feasible, in certain areas, it's just not feasible. And it's not gonna work.
Uh, Mr. Mann, who have been your political role models and why? Uh, Mr. Mann, who have been your political role models and why?
Uh, I don't know if anyone here remembers Mr. Roy Harvey and his family. Roy was a county commissioner, one of the longest-serving county commissioners in Baker County. I grew up knowing Roy and his family and he cared about the county first. He wasn't worried what was politically correct, he wasn't worried about being a professional politician, he was worried about taking care of the county. He knew about construction, he knew about business, and uh he had an overall view of what was best for the county. He understood that growth was gonna happen and he helped the county address that growth because he was in the road and highway construction business. But Roy was always a fine example of what the individual can do as part of the county government. And I always looked up to him. He always had his family first. He was a Christian man like I am, and he believed in taking care of his community because Baker County was his to him. And I think that's the same way we all see it here today.
I'll just say that I followed politics my whole life. I have, uh, when I turned eighteen years old, I voted in my first election. I uh, I was able to, I voted in every major election since then. I drove five hundred and sixty miles one way to vote. In the presidential election about five times back and then drove five hundred and sixty miles back to work the next day. Just because I felt it was that important. So I feel like good role models in our government i- is very important. Yeah, I think Ronald Reagan did a lot for our country, you know, the others, but on a more local level. Uh, you know, Gene Harvey was always fair to me. Every time I ever walked in that man's office, he was fair to me with any problem or issue that I had. You know, he was, he was good to me and he didn't know me that well, I mean, from anybody else, but he was a fair man, you know? Uh, my pastor, Fred Rollerson, you know, I'm a Christian too, and uh he is my pastor, but he used to be a county commissioner and he was building inspector. You know, and I can honestly say, from what I know of him then and now, he was a very fair man. And to me, being a a public servant, that is super important, is that you're fair with everyone. Regardless as to what, you gotta be honest, you gotta be fair, you gotta be transparent, and you gotta have some integrity. And those men had it.
I keep it local here too and uh, um, meaning you may not know him, but uh Tommy Frazier. He lived out in Sanderson. And uh, the reason being, when, he was a commissioner from seventy-two to seventy-six. And I was just eight years old, but I remember him because he always came through the community. He he drove a little red Jeep with a soft black top. And he came through the community and he would stop and talk to the men in the community. And uh, we lived on a dirt road and many times I I remember him coming on the weekends because. It it was on a Sunday, that's when we had our best meal, I can remember. And uh, he would stop and talk to the men in the community. The uh Mr. Chestnut with our neighbor, J R Smith and uh Tom Gregory, Justin. But he often stopped and talked to my dad as well. Never knew what they talked about because we couldn't uh. During that time, young folks couldn't be in grown folk business, but we knew they talked, but we couldn't be in there.
To be seen, not to be heard. Yeah.
Right. But uh, later that week and sometime that same day, our dad would tell us that uh. Hey, you boy don't be on that road because the grader's gonna be coming through. And and I knew that Tommy Frazier came and they talked, and that's one of the things that they told that we we. We need our road to be uh graded. And sure enough, uh, that week, the the grader would come through and grade the road and perpetrate it. But I I liked the him because he was in the community, he was involved, he was, he was seen that at eight years old. I noticed him and I saw him. And I liked him because he did his job as a a commissioner. I didn't know he was a commissioner at the time, but I later found out that that's why he came to the uh community because he was doing his job as a commissioner.
But why else um should voters fill in the circle next to your name here in Phoenix?
Okay, it's plain and simple. A vote for me is a vote for you. Because I'm here to serve you. I'm not here for any other reason. I've never been a politician, never run for any office, never really cared about it. What I care about is making things better for the people of the community. I'm running for county commission because I just wanna make things better. I see the challenges that we have. I go to these budget meetings, I talk to people in the community under many different circumstances and I get a feel for what's going on and what's the concerns. That's why I know a lot of your questions were really good questions from the community. Because I'm here for that reason, for the community. I ain't got nothing to gain. I don't need my road paved, I don't have a personal agenda, I don't have any of these things going on. I live on a dirt road. And I'm just fine with it. I'm actually happy with my dirt road. Since the county fixed it years ago, I'm thrilled. But, you know, I'm here for you. And that's why I'm here. There's no other reason that I'm here. I'm not here because of me. It's just that simple.
I feel like I'm in the same boat with the voters and and we're seeking the same thing here in Baker County. Uh, I mean, I live here, I went to school here, paid taxes here, I started, I even uh, I go to church here. So I'm I'm my my whole family, both side, my wife's side and my side, they're they're all from here, from Baker County. So I'm I'm committed to Baker County and I want what is best for Baker County. And I'm up for the challenge for Baker County to see that we get what is due to Baker County. And I'm I'm up for the service of the people of Baker County. And also the um, I believe, and I honestly believe that on day one, I'm prepared to serve on day one.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jefferson.
I've been in the steel business now for over forty-five years. I've been in Baker County all my life. I understand how business works. Uh, recently endorsed by the First Coast Manufacturers Association because of my business experience and my business background. Uh, I think the people of Baker County know my heritage in Baker County. My grandmother ran a store in Sanderson for sixty-five years. My family's been involved in government here. I was on the Development Commission here for twenty years. I was on the Baker County Education Foundation here for twenty years. Uh, with the foundation, we raised over a million dollars for teacher mini-grants and student scholarships. I was appointed by three Republican governors to public service, not paid opportunities. But volunteer opportunities all of those forty years of public service experience. I've been involved through Development Commission and through other uh activities in the community. And I plan to stay involved. Elected or not, I'll be involved in our community because I treasure what we have. Our heritage is important to me and our future is important for me and my grandchildren, who all live here in the county. And I'm honored to be a candidate and I appreciate their consideration and vote as we go to the election on August twentieth.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you all for being here and sharing your thoughts with voters. Good day.
Thank you.
For having us.